And we welcome those seeking asylum with open arms and hearts. It's our responsibility as a city to provide them with services, resources, and the tools to build safe and dignified lives, just as we must for all New Yorkers who call our city home. We acknowledge the inherent challenges of addressing this unprecedented crisis, and we thank the hard work of municipal employees, nonprofit and community partners, and everyday New Yorkers who have stepped up to meet the needs of asylum seekers. These needs include shelter, clothing, food, physical and mental health care, education, transportation, language access, and legal services. Yet we know gaps in critical services and support remain. Last week, John Ortega, a 26-year-old father seeking asylum, died by suicide, marking the second death of a migrant in our city's shelter system. We heard from public testimony yesterday that there are others who have attempted suicide. Because of the stigma around mental health, combined with the traumatic conditions that many face prior to and during their journey, it's especially important that we are proactive in providing culturally competent mental health care. As I said yesterday during the hearing, the city has an obligation to improve conditions across the shelter system, provide mental health services, and meet the vast array of needs of people who have already been through so much. We have to think creatively and work collaboratively to provide both immediate and long-term solutions. From the onset of this crisis, this council has sought to play a constructive role in supporting people seeking asylum and our communities that host them. We've recognized the importance of partnership and support from our state and federal governments while continuing to fulfill our role of holding city agencies accountable. We've also prioritized the development of solutions to improve policies and services by listening to and leveraging the input of community-based organizations on the ground providing essential support. Today, the council released a new report outlining the challenges to effectively supporting asylum seekers and New Yorkers alike, paired with policy recommendations that can help address them. These policy solutions will benefit all New Yorkers, especially those who lack access to safe and stable housing or need culturally competent services. In some cases, our recommendations will be followed with accompanying legislation. The recommendations are organized by points in time on a migrant's journey, from pre-arrival priorities to needs upon arrival and long-term needs for those who decide to stay in New York City. Our policy proposals cover a range of areas such as housing, economic opportunity, food insecurity, healthcare, and education. These policies can only be achieved with the partnership of the administration and our state and federal partners, and I look forward to working with my colleagues in government, community organizations on the front lines, and all stakeholders to enact these holistic and comprehensive reforms. By working together, we can improve the lives of migrants seeking asylum and all New Yorkers who are building a life in our great city. On a related note, one of the stressors of this crisis is the housing crisis facing our city. Last week, I unveiled my housing agenda, which provides a comprehensive set of housing solutions that prioritize equitable and responsible affordable housing development, deeper levels of affordability, and housing preservation. This year alone, the council has approved over 40 projects to create more than 12,000 units of new housing, with more than 63% being affordable. However, overall, housing production has not kept pace with the growing need in our city, worsening our affordability crisis. As part of this plan, I intend to introduce legislation to establish a citywide fair housing framework, which will create targeted goals for every community district to ensure affordable housing development is an equitable, is an equitably shared goal. At the same time, I rolled out a planning and land use toolkit, which provides guidance and tools for council members, communities, and land use applicants to successfully advance projects that balance important neighborhood needs with citywide housing goals. It places an emphasis on comprehensive planning that can make the land use process more effective, reliable, and responsive. It is my hope that the toolkit will help the council to continue advancing solutions that provide safe, stable, and affordable homes to New Yorkers. My housing agenda seeks to contribute solutions in this urgent moment that we can collectively advance through partnership across government. Before I continue, I want to express my support for our colleague, Councilmember Botcher. Two nights ago, he was targeted by hateful attacks at his home and office, including alleged acts of trespassing. These vile actions are completely unacceptable. I've been disturbed by the ways in which homophobic and transphobic hate has become more frequent, along with other forms of hate. It is unacceptable and disgraceful, and we will continue to reject any attempt to normalize it. I send my love and support to Councilmember Botcher and the LGBTQIA+ community, as well as other council members that too have been targeted in this body with acts that are despicable. We will continue to stand with you against hate and in support of your humanity. Now let's move on to our stated agenda. First, we will vote on the following appointments. Isabel Castilla as a member of the New York City Public Design Commission. James Van Bramer as a member of the New York City Public Design Commission. Next, we will vote on the following finance items. A pre-considered resolution sponsored by Councilmember Justin Brannon to amend a previous exemption for one building in Hell's Kitchen. And a transparency resolution approving new designations and changes of certain organizations receiving funding in the expense budget. And we will vote on the following pieces of legislation, several of which came from proposals in my State of the City to increase park space in underserved communities, expand opportunities for New Yorkers with disabilities, and enhance language access. First, we will vote on three pieces of legislation from the Parks Committee, two of which relate to improving the efficiency of the Parks Capital Project process and one that focuses on expanding green space. Introduction 174A, sponsored by our Parks and Recreation Committee Chair, Councilmember Shekhar Krishnan, will improve transparency and the sharing of information about Parks Capital Projects. The bill would improve the web-based capital tracker, which posts details about the status of each project by requiring the Parks Department to post additional information, such as the total number of projects in its portfolio, the reasons for any delays, the dates that projects were fully funded, projected, and actual cost overruns, individual resources of funding, and the length of time it took to complete each project. Introduction 842A, also sponsored by Councilmember Krishnan, would require the Parks Department to prepare a strategy to identify ways to reduce the duration of capital projects by at least 25%. Some of the proposed ideas include implementing incentives for early completion, increasing the standardization of various processes, timelines, and forums, improving coordination with utility companies, and examining possible changes to regulatory barriers that slow the process down. The strategy would have to be submitted no later than December 1st, 2023. And Introduction 680A, also sponsored by Councilmember Krishnan, would help the city identify more areas that can be greened or made into small parks. This bill would require various city agencies to survey dead ends, highway entrance and exit areas, and other city-owned vacant land, particularly in environmental justice communities, to determine the feasibility of planting trees or other vegetation in those areas or possibly turning them into small parks. The survey would be completed by April 1st, 2024, and would include an analysis of the condition of each surveyed site, as well as the feasibility of planting trees or other vegetation, or the installation of bioswales, small parks, or other green spaces for each site. This bill originated from an idea introduced in my State of the City address earlier this year, so I'm very proud to see how it developed further from that foundation. And I do invite Councilmember Krishnan to the podium to speak about his pieces of legislation today.
Good afternoon, everyone. First, thank you so much, Speaker Adams, for being such a champion and ensuring our council is a champion for expanding green space and access to green space across our city. These three bills today, just taking a step back, I've always said, as Chair of our Parks Committee, how crucial it is to make sure that every New Yorker has access in an equitable way to green space. I know this, representing a community that has some of the, in Jackson Heights and Elmhurst, that has some of the least amount of park space in all of New York City. Intro 174A makes our capital process for constructing parks and playgrounds much more transparent in the effort to make it much more efficient. All of us, as councilmembers here every day, from our own constituents, when they step outside of their homes and walk down the street, wanting to know what the status of their park project is that we funded, wanting to know when it's going to happen, or if there are delays, why there are delays. And this legislation would ensure that every New Yorker can learn more and understand more about where their park project is in their community. Intro 842A, working with the Playfair Coalition, New Yorkers for Parks, and a number of labor unions, is an effort to make sure that our Parks Department can also find ways to reduce its timeline for capital projects by 25%. The only way we're going to expand, or one of the most crucial ways we're going to expand green spaces in our city, is to make for a far more effective and efficient capital process, both citywide and for our, across citywide agencies, and for our Parks Department too. And finally, I'm so excited about Intro 680, as Speaker Adams mentioned, a priority introduced at her State of the City address earlier this year, which, again, addresses the issue of finding ambitious and creative ways to expand green space. As a city, if we are going to expand green space for communities that don't have it, we have to think about different ways to do so. And looking at ways for the Parks Department to find opportunities for microparks, bioswales, and other green spaces through redundant spaces in our streetscapes, whether it's dead ends or highway entry and exit ramps, is a critical way to think more ambitiously about how to create green space where it doesn't exist. This is as much about making our processes for green spaces more efficient, maintaining them, and creating new green space. And I want to thank the Speaker and my colleagues in the council too for all your support and for making the access to green space and park space equity a priority of the City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Krishnan. Next, we will vote on legislation to help New Yorkers track our city's street cleaning efforts. Introduction 630A, sponsored by Sanitation Committee Chair, Councilmember Sandy Nurse, would require the Department of Sanitation to equip all street sweepers with Global Positioning System, or GPS technology, and ensure that the GPS is functioning during street cleaning operations. This bill would also require DSNY to create a page on its website where New Yorkers could track and confirm the completion of street cleanings. In addition, this bill would require DSNY to submit biannual reports for two years on city street cleanings and for the reports to be made publicly available on DSNY's website. I invite Councilmember Nurse to come up to speak about her legislation.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, Speaker Adams. Thank you for your support of this legislation. Today, I'm proud that the council will pass my first bill, Intro 630, which I'm calling Sweep NYC. Co-sponsored by members Gutierrez and Botcher, requires DSNY to equip street sweepers with a GPS tracker, maintain a public website where New Yorkers can confirm the completion of their streets being cleaned. The same way New Yorkers can track DSNY through the Plow NYC, it would be the same thing. It would be Sweep NYC. This year, sanitation issues were top of the mind for New Yorkers, as indicated by the rise in 3-1-1 complaints regarding dirty conditions. It's also clear New Yorkers believe that maintaining a clean city is critical to public safety. We can't accept litter on our streets as the new normal. This is not just the New York way of life. We really need to focus on accountability, transparency, and equitable street cleaning operations. The best tools we have in cleaning up all the bits of paper and trash and recycling that line our curbs every day are DSNY's mechanical brooms, or called street sweepers. DSNY uses about 430 of these street sweepers to cover 6,000 miles of city roads and collect about 1,500 pounds of trash per trip. But despite this enormous operation, New Yorkers made about almost 4,000 complaints to 3-1-1 this year regarding streets not being swept. And even with the full reinstatement of alternate side parking by Mayor Adams in July of this year, we need to continue to address these ongoing complaints. We often hear from residents who wait in their cars for 90 minutes or more, as required, only to never see a street sweeper go by. Meanwhile, litter and leaves remain on the curb and end up in street tree pits, catch basins, rain gardens, and ultimately in front of homes and businesses. So I am really proud, as a freshman council member, to end this year by spearheading this new law that so concretely and so directly solves a quality-of-life problem that many New Yorkers experience. Again, I want to thank Speaker Adams for her support on this bill. Thank you to my Director of Climate and Environmental Policy, Anell Hernandez, for all your work, the Sanitation Committee staff for all their work. I'm just incredibly grateful for the continued collaboration with DSNY and Commissioner Tish. And last but not least, I just really want to thank all the frontline sanitation workers of the city for the work they do every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Nurse, and thank you for your commitment to help and clean up our city. Really, really great work. Next, we will vote on a few bills expanding opportunities for New Yorkers with disabilities. Introduction 681A, sponsored by our Mental Health Disabilities and Addiction Committee Chair, Councilmember Linda Lee, would require the Department of Small Business Services, or SBS, the Mayor's Office of Talent and Workforce Development, MOTWD, and the Mayor's Office for People with Disabilities, MOPD, to collaborate in creating and publicizing a workforce development program for people with disabilities in New York City. The bill would also expand the existing NYC-at-work program by requiring SBS, MOTWD, and MOPD to maintain an online resource to connect employers and job seekers, including a current list of all vacant positions from participating employers. Introduction 682A, also sponsored by Councilmember Lee, would require the Mayor's Office for People with Disabilities to work with every city agency to devise five-year accessibility plans from each agency no later than March 14th, 2024. These plans will outline the steps each agency will take over the next five years to improve physical and digital access to its workplace, services, and programs. I invite Councilmember Lee to come up and say a few words about her bills.
Thank you so much, Speaker Adams. And whenever I talk to leaders and advocates in the disabilities community, they repeatedly tell me over and over again how you are the first speaker that they can recall that has really included people with disabilities in your State of the City address, and it really means a lot to them. And so very proud to stand here alongside all of you and my colleagues to pass these two pieces of legislation today. So as the Speaker had already mentioned, you know, Intro 681, it will require the Mayor's Office for People with Disabilities and the Mayor's Office of Talent and Workforce Development and Department of SBS to create a workplace development program for people with disabilities. And it will help folks to have an online portal, have access to connect people with employers, help them with their interviews, help them with their resume writing, and other supportive services for those that are seeking jobs. And it will expand, as the Speaker mentioned, on the existing NYC-at-work employment that recruits prescreens and connects New Yorkers with disabilities to jobs and internships. And there are nearly 1 million New Yorkers living with disabilities in New York City. And compared to other New Yorkers, residents with disabilities are recorded to have higher rates of unemployment and underemployment. And according to the Census Supplemental Poverty Measure, 21.6% of people living with disabilities were measured to be living in poverty. So as a city, it is incumbent on us to ensure that we promote every opportunity for the employment of all New Yorkers, to not only live up to the vision of inclusivity and accessibility, but to also provide a jumpstart to economic growth on the road to recovery. And something that the advocates have been telling me over and over again is that, if anything, what COVID has shown us is that, what they've been saying for years is true, which is that people with disabilities can work, they want to work, and we have the tools and technology to be able to allow them into the workforce, especially during a time where we need people to step into certain roles that are much needed. So hopefully, this bill will accomplish that. The next bill, Intro 682, will require the Mayor's Office of People with Disabilities to consult with each city agency and the MTA to collect a five-year plan detailing their steps to improve the accessibility of programming and accommodations for people with disabilities. So this will include budgetary allocations, alterations, or structural changes to facilities, and any other steps agencies plan to take in order to improve compliance with federal, state, and local disability laws. As a social worker formerly from the nonprofit sector and now Chair of the Mental Health, Disabilities, and Addictions Committee, I've seen how the pandemic has disproportionately affected our disability community. And this package of legislation is overdue and a necessary step to jumpstart New York City's recovery and create a city that is inclusive. Thank you to all the advocates in the disability community whose voices were needed and appreciated during this long process of creating these two bills. I also want to thank the agencies who have partnered with us to craft and fine-tune this legislation, including Moped, MOTWD, and SBS. And of course, thank you to my colleagues in the Committee on Mental Health, Disabilities, and Addiction, Speaker Adams, for your collective leadership and advocacy as we follow the vision of making New York City a more accessible city for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Next, we will vote on a language access legislative package. I'm glad the council is voting on these bills today to ensure that New Yorkers whose primary language is not English can receive the services they need. Introduction 136B, sponsored by our Contracts Committee Chair, Councilmember Julie Wan, would require an agency designated by the mayor to conduct a survey of community-based organizations to assess their capacity to provide translation, interpretation, and other related language services. Within one year of the bill taking effect, the agency would be required to produce a report detailing the survey's findings and recommends steps to remove barriers facing community-based organizations in providing language access to New Yorkers. Introduction 700A, also sponsored by Councilmember Wan, would require city agencies to translate commonly distributed documents that relate to the enforcement of local laws and rules. This would include documents such as the plain language summaries that are handed out to small business owners on business education days. These documents would need to be translated into each of the 10 designated citywide languages, which are the top 10 languages spoken by New Yorkers with limited English proficiency. I invite Councilmember Wan to come up and say a few words about her bills.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you so much, Speaker Adams. It is with a very heavy heart that we are here passing these two language access bills today. When Intro 136A was introduced originally, and now it is 136B, I had given two weeks before it was, before the introduction. As the first woman immigrant and Asian American to represent that district, it was with great hope that we introduced it because that bill stemmed from the Woodside family who passed away, along with a two-year-old that died during Hurricane Ida because they were unable to understand what their emergency messages were on their phone and phone calls that were happening, and within two minutes, they had drowned. And now I stand before you, finishing up our first term, my first term, and our first year as a council class. And a week ago, we had lost another resident who was a migrant refugee living in a shelter in my district to suicide, who left behind three children and a single mother now. But I know that with the great strides that we are making with this leadership under Speaker Adams, with the funding that we are providing, in addition to these, this package of language access bills, I know that help is on the way because language access, whether we realize it or not, is a matter of life and death. You could save a life, we could have saved that man's life if he simply had access to mental health resources in Spanish, in a language that he could understand, where he would feel comfortable to speak on what he was dealing with, the trauma that he had run away from, and the trauma that he was experiencing on a daily basis. So I thank my colleagues, as well as the Speaker, for being in this fight with us. And for 136B, along with that bill, we are going to be funding $5 million to create the country's first-ever Community Interpreter Bank and Language Services Workers Co-op. So instead of having language access lines outside of our state and city, in Ohio and other states where you have to call in to say, "This person does not speak English. Can you translate in XYZ language?" Now we will be able to partner and source from nonprofits in our own backyards, in our own city, who understand the cultural competence, as well as the culture of our city, and the busyness and everything in between, and provide job opportunities, as well as the language translations that they deserve and need. So with the funding we secured, and in partnership with Intro 136, we will be directing translation funding to local organizations and creating local jobs, and providing much higher-quality linguistic and culturally competent translations for all New Yorkers, for our city agencies. And with Intro 700, we would expand our language access law to require agencies to translate written materials when enforcing city laws and carrying compliance actions because we heard throughout COVID how difficult it was already to just survive and to have new regulations that was only provided in English. A lot of our immigrant neighbors struggled to follow those regulations. But I know with this package of legislation and with our new, with our current leadership, and with all the efforts at hand, we know that there are brighter days ahead and more hospitality for our migrant refugees in the sanctuary city that we stand in today. And I just want to thank our, I want to thank the Speaker again for making language access a part of her agenda, and I want to thank Councilmember Ung Brewer and Menon and Hanif for their leadership with me. And I'd also like to thank the advocates, NYIC, MASA, African Communities Together, as well as Asian American Federation for their partnership in advocating for this to come through. And I also want to thank Lorena Lucero, as well as Carlos Machaca, for supporting this bill when it first came to hand, to make sure that it came into fruition. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Wan. Next, the Business Owners' Bill of Rights and the Food Service Establishment Code of Conduct are documents produced by the city that inform small business owners of their rights during inspections and other enforcement activities. Introduction 699A, sponsored by Councilmember Sandra Ung, would require these documents to be translated into additional languages and to include additional information about language access services provided by the city. In addition, the bill would require city agencies that regularly conduct inspections to report annually on the number of bilingual inspectors they employ. Finally, the bill would require the Office of Administrative Trials and Hearings to provide small business owners with translations of written decisions upon request. Introduction 697A, also sponsored by Councilmember Ung, would help ensure that city agencies are prepared to serve large populations who are migrating to the city and do not speak one of the designated citywide languages. Going forward, if there is a conflict, natural disaster, or other event that is likely to cause a significant number of individuals to arrive in the city and seek city services, the Office of the Language Services Coordinator would need to identify the primary languages spoken by those individuals and list those languages online. City agencies providing food, shelter, or other urgent assistance would then need to translate relevant documents and make interpretation services available in the languages identified. I invite Councilmember Ung to come up and discuss her bills.
Good afternoon, and thank you to the Speaker for allowing me to discuss these two important pieces of legislation. Staying informed, the numerous rules and regulations that govern the operation of a small business in New York City can be daunting, and even for large companies with staff training compliance. For small business owners whose primary focus is on the many other responsibilities associated with running their companies, understanding and adhering to those regulations is always a challenge. And for small business owners with limited English proficiency, it can be overwhelming. Intro 699A will help our immigrant entrepreneurs better understand their rights and responsibilities by translating the City Business Owners' Bill of Rights and Inspection Code of Conduct into citywide designated languages. More importantly, it requires OVE to provide translations of their written decisions when requested. This will help business owners with limited English proficiency better understand the nature of the summons and the basis for the OVE decisions, as well as important information about how to file appeal or apply for extension. Our immigrant, small-owned businesses are the backbone of the city, and we should do whatever is possible to help them drive, internally communicating with them in their preferred language. Meanwhile, Intro 697A will allow the city to better serve some of New York's newest residents, many of whom are fleeing dangerous and even dangerous conditions in their home countries. And I could relate to that, like, I arrived in New York City when I was just seven years old, fleeing the genocide in Cambodia. My bill will ensure that cities provide language services beyond the 10 citywide designated languages in neighborhoods where people or protected communities are building new ones. As a beacon for individuals from across the world, the United States welcomes those who seek asylum, refuge from war, famine, and other tragedies. It's incumbent on New York City to ensure that these individuals are receiving services in the language that they speak. Again, I want to thank Speaker Adams for your leadership in this, and I look forward to the rest of my city council members in passing these two bills. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ung. And finally, Introduction 382A, sponsored by Councilmember Gail Brewer, would provide in-language guidance to small business owners who receive a settlement offer from the city after being charged with a violation of city law. Specifically, the bill would require each settlement offer sent by the Department of Consumer and Worker Protection, or the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene, to include a multilingual notice that informs the small business owner that they are being charged with a violation of the law, and directs the owner via a QR code to a portion of the agency's website with plain language information about responding to settlement offers. Both the notice and the plain language information would need to be translated into each of the designated citywide languages. I invite Councilmember Brewer to come up and say a few words about this bill. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I was just listening and thinking because you I was just listening and thinking, because you have been so terrific on languages, that we should publish in addition to being such a diverse city council. I bet we speak more languages than the state legislature, the state senate, the United States Congress, and maybe any other city council in the United States. Just another way that this city council is great. I just want to thank you for everyone's support of 382, as you heard from the Speaker, that this would require settlement offered by the Department of Consumer and Worker Protection and the Department of Health and Mental Health. And she talked about how they would receive, if they get material, but something to do that they've supposedly been wrong in terms of a violation, sometimes it's really hard to know how you are supposed to respond. And so this would mandate that there is language information about the options for the recipient, so that they are not left with a notice that is not responded to and then get even in more trouble. So that's incredibly important. I do want to say this is not my first go-around in the city council, as you all know, but it's also the not first time on language. I have to say, it was 2002 when then-Councilmember John Lew and I passed Local Law 73, and that was, I think, the first law in the city council to mandate that there be language access. That was particularly focused on human services. And goodness knows that one-half of New Yorkers, 3.8 million, speak a language other than English, and 1.8 million people are not English proficient. Forty-seven percent of small business owners are foreign-born, and all you have to do is go around and talk to your small businesses to know that, and of course, this bill and other bills would help them in particular. We've done this in the past because publicly distributed information must be available in 10 designated citywide languages as required by Local Law 30, and city agencies covered by that law are required to provide telephonic interpretations in at least 100 languages. But we all know, and thanks again to the Speaker for having the two days of asylum seekers discussion, we learned from some of the nonprofits on the second day when they spoke that this language line is often overbooked. In 2021, the Mayor's Office immigrants translated materials for 34 offices into 47 languages. And these materials are included of resources on the vaccine COVID material, hate crimes prevention, mental health and health insurance. But be clear, nearly 1.1 million people, 311 callers, each one of them, requested an interpreter in 2020. 1.1 million asked 311 for an interpreter. So you can see the need. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker and my colleagues, and I really want to see the list of all the languages we speak so we can beat all those other city councils. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Brewer, for always maintaining the history of this council. And I always say with great admiration that she is indeed the sage of the city council. That concludes our stated agenda, and with that, we will take on-topic questions first.
Hi, Speaker.
Hi, Emily.
We see a little more about the funding, the resources, the staff that are necessary in some of these policy recommendations laid out in the report on migrant critical services. I'm sure the administration would have something to say about the lack of funding to make some of this a reality.
We are still, of course, still in the planning stages, and as Councilmember Brewer said, the hearings for the past two days brought a lot of things into our site, which is what the oversight hearings are there clearly to do, is to bring out things that we didn't know were happening. So all of those items are still being taken a look at. The appropriate funding, we still have to figure that out, because like I said, oversight is what this council does very, very well, and what was discovered over the past two days is going to help us greatly to answer your question.
Also, Emily, if you look at the budget modifications from the letter from John for 101B, there is a call-out exactly for language access for $5,000 extra dollars, even though we are seeing austerity measures. So I think that still shows great leadership in understanding and acknowledging the great need for language access for the influx of migrants and refugees and asylum seekers in our city. So that is a large chunk of what we need.
I have a question on Councilmember Brewer's tracking bill. Want to double-check that's going to be a publicly accessible place for people to look in real time?
Yeah, so it will look very similar to Plow NYC. So you'll have, you pull up the screen, you can zoom into your, I mean, have you seen how it looks, right? You can zoom into your thing. There's a question of whether it will be like real-time, like you're watching the vehicle come down, or if it'll be, you know, at the end of the day or midday. But it's, it'll be exactly like that.
And then what do you hope to do with that information, in terms of what sanitation needs to improve?
Yeah, I mean, so right now, a portion of the streets, you know, on any given cleaning day, it doesn't fully get completed, and we know that from people telling us, "I've sat in my car and it hasn't come." This is just to create more transparency. Some of the fleet, some of this has to do with the fleet just not being operational. I think about 20% of the fleet is not operational for the street brooms. But beyond that, this is, this is a way for people to say and confirm, actually, it wasn't cleaned. There was a lot of in the 311 data duplicate. So people are constantly saying their street isn't being clean, and those cases are being closed and considered as one, when you have your street multiple times not being cleaned. So this is a way for New Yorkers to answer for themselves. And then we can ask more questions as we start to see that go live. You know, why isn't it getting done? Is it the fleet, or is something else happening? So I think this is just about opening up and allowing New Yorkers to have that information, and not in just open data, but actually as a visual format.
Yes, so Speaker. Hi, how are you?
Hi.
I'm wondering if you can give us an update on the HRA staffing crisis that's affecting the SNAP benefits and the food stamps, and whether there's an emergency act or any way to get some more bodies in that office to process these applications, so the money that's just sitting there with the feds can get to the people needing it.
That's a great question, and thank you for it. Again, this is a part of our discussion and the reason that we had the two days of oversight yesterday as well. This is a great concern for the council. Number one, the understaffing in our agencies right now, the lack of resources going out to New Yorkers that desperately need these resources and need this information. The fact that SNAP benefits and other benefits are being held up for lack of resources is a great concern of ours. We are going to continue to do our part in continuing to press the administration, work with the administration to try to fulfill these needs, and try to push these agencies to do the work that they are committed to do for New Yorkers.
On the discretionary funding issue, do you foresee any situation where some of that money might be turned over as the mayor's requesting? How do you feel about that request coming from the mayor?
Well, the mayor's request arrived just before midnight last night, and we were quite surprised that the mayor seemed to want to renegotiate the budget with the New York Post Editorial Board. That's not exactly how city government works. This council funds all nonprofit organizations, all service providers that are relied on by communities across the city, especially Black and Brown communities, Asian communities, immigrant communities, the LGBTQIA+ communities. In fact, the organizations doing the lion's share of work to address the asylum seeker crisis, especially since many of our city agencies are understaffed, as we were just saying, and under-resourced, we cannot allow the mayor's suggestion that we cut a lifeline to communities, stand as a viable option. These are service providers, viable, needed service providers that provide the lifeline to New Yorkers in need. So in my estimation, what we should be asking is why the administration is being so opaque about its spending on contracts during the asylum seeker crisis. We need those answers. We still don't know the exact full amount they paid to construct and operate the outdoor Herc on Randall's Island. It was hundreds of millions of dollars, but we don't have an exact figure for that yet. Tens of millions of dollars were paid to a management consulting firm to advise their vendors on tent construction. It was reported just a little while ago that a Yankee Stadium parking company owes the city over $100 million. So we can't let the mayor place the city's challenges even further on the shoulders of nonprofit service providers that we are asking to do more because of a lack of resources in the administration, especially when there are corporations and big businesses that aren't paying what they owe to the city. This would absolutely be a direct attack on the health and well-being of our communities, and the council won't stand for that.
How sympathetic are you to this general argument that there is no money to be found, that federal government has not come through with whatever money he's asking for, that everyone needs to step up here in some way?
Well, it seemed to me that Majority Leader Schumer and Leader Jeffries were very, very happy with the $800 million that was announced by the federal government yesterday to help New York, to help alleviate some of the resource issues and funding for the asylum seeker crisis. So we need to figure out, you know, what is real and what is not.
I just wanted to follow up on Steve's question, is if you could talk a little bit about, you know, the mayor framing this as, we have this crisis, and if we don't get money or aid soon, it's going to come at a cost to, you know, New Yorkers, this kind of choice. And can you talk about the way he's framed that? And also, is there, at the heart of this, is there an essential disagreement between the council and the mayor on what our budget outlook is? You know, I'm seeing reports that we have a surplus coming in. The mayor's office, I know the mayor has not delivered their update yet, but I mean, is that also part of the issue here, too?
Yeah, well, all things, all things are definitely being considered, and thank you for the question. It's a very, very important question. The council's economists foresaw the budget information and the expected city revenue over the next fiscal years, which is why we were very perplexed that the administration's November plan didn't include it. We saw that the, we saw the IBO report, it's encouraging, and hopefully it'll mean that our city will be in better fiscal health in the coming years, but we're going to have to continue to have ongoing conversations about what this means for our city moving forward. As far as the framing around, you know, the dire situation of funding for the city right now, yes, the city is in crisis across the board with, as far as our homelessness situation, our public safety situation, a lot of situations, mental health situations all the way around. We need to be able to reach consensus. We are here willing and able to come to the table and talk about all of this with the administration. We've got some, some great ideas. But again, going back to the federal funding, we, once we see the federal funding come in that we need, we have to be focused on spending it effectively in those places that most need that funding, and ensure, of course, that the asylum seekers get the support that they, they need. But overall, we can't do that on the backs of our nonprofit organizations that we need. Those services are the services who are protecting our asylum seekers, who are there every day meeting those buses. Those are the workers who are there providing those mental health services. Those are our workers who are there providing extensive services across the city, so we have to protect them as well.
Speaker, the mayor is certainly giving remorse, but he raises an update on his public safety effort. May I ask you where you believe that he has succeeded when it comes to his care of public safety, where he's going to be better?
Well, the mayor certainly has prioritized public safety, and we have seen the statistics, you know, the crime statistics go down, which is what we wanted. So in that respect, we are, you know, absolutely happy with that. I don't know what the specifics are, you know, with his announcement or his press conference or whatever that is, though. Thank you. Happy holidays, everybody.
Thank you. Happy holidays.[1686.33]